Recording the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, just so everybody knows, whoever's on, we are recording this meeting. These meetings are been downloaded to the town's website or to the YouTube channel. So before we get started, I need to read the governor's order. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Freetown Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Freetown's website, freetownma.gov. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we were unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Freetown's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, uh, we have a relatively short agenda tonight. Um, I will take care of a couple of things first. Uh, one of the applicants has, is double booked tonight and asked that they be placed first on the agenda, and I'm going to do that. That would be the discussion on a minor plan modification for Neon Innovation Way project. Secondly, uh, we have a public hearing that is scheduled for tonight, and that is for an application for 12 Forge Road for a solar project. The applicant has asked for a continuation. Um, Chris, did they give a, a, a date?
Uh, yes, April 20th.
April 20th. Okay, so I will call that public hearing back to order real quick, uh, just so those, if there's interested parties, they don't have to sit around and wait to see what we do. Uh, now that I've called it back to order, recognizing that there is still outstanding peer review, and the applicant's request to be continued to, uh, April 20th at six o'clock via Zoom, um, I will entertain a motion that we continue that public hearing to that time and place.
I'll make that motion, Kevin.
Thank you. Second. Okay, most remain supported. Uh, if there is no further discussion on the motion, I will do a roll call vote. Um, Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Deb Robbins, aye. Jim Freitz.
Aye.
Jim Freitz, aye. Uh, Kevin Demaris, aye. Is Chris Mello here?
Yep, I'm here. Aye.
Excellent, Chris. All right. Sorry, Chris Mello. Chris Mello states aye. So that, that public hearing has been continued. Um, if, uh, again, um, if the applicant for, uh, the minor plan modification for Neon Innovation Way is ready, uh, we can take them. If they need to screen share, please, uh, Chris, allow them to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Thomas Klon, representing the applicant, DevCon Innovation Way LLC. With me tonight is Brandon Carr from, uh, Dupree Engineering, who is the site design engineer, and also Nick Giacobi, one of the principals of the, uh, development, uh, Developing LLC. I'd like to thank the, the board and the chairman for, uh, taking us onto board tonight, as Mr. Carr has a, uh, hearing in another town at seven o'clock, so thank you for that. We're here before the board, uh, this evening, and Brandon will share his screen in a moment and go through the plan in a little bit more detail. Uh, but as, uh, Mr. Demaris mentioned, we're here before you, uh, seeking, um, a determination by the board that the changes to our plan, uh, would be considered a minor modification. As the board may recall, we did appear before you, um, I think in late 2020 and then early, um, 2021, uh, we had two public hearings with regard to the, uh, development of this project on Innovation Way, uh, for a gas station, um, which would include a Dunkin' Donuts and a convenience store, and then for two additional buildings on the site. Um, the, ultimately, the uses for those buildings were not yet determined, and it was gonna really depend upon what they could ultimately find, um, for tenants. Uh, after getting the approval, uh, and once we, once the applicant started to go out to bid, um, for construction prices, uh, it became clear that developing the site, um, as originally designed was going to be cost prohibitive, uh, at this point. So ultimately, what we're seeking to do is to eliminate one building. Uh, it'll be the building, if you're standing at the street looking at the property, um, it'll be the building all the way on the right or on the northerly side of the property, um, proposing to eliminate that, uh, eliminate significant impervious area. Um, but then, uh, as part and parcel to this would be a redesign of the drainage as well, um, on the, again, on that northerly side of the property, uh, there'd be an above-ground detention basin, which, um, Mr. Carr can certainly explain in, in greater detail than I can. Uh, but we'd suggest to the board that as, again, a- as we're going to less buildings, less impervious area, uh, we're asking the board to make a determination that this is a, uh, a minor modification from the plan that was ultimately approved, again, one that included three buildings, um, and significantly more impervious area. So, um, at this point, um, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Carr, perhaps he can share his screen, uh, if he's able to do so, and then he can give you a better role review of the plan and exactly what the changes are that we're making.
All right, uh, good evening. Uh, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, um, again, Brandon Carr from Dupree Engineering, thanks again for, um, taking us at a turn. Um, so what I have up on the screen now is the approved plan. So, um, as Tom said, three buildings, working from left to right, the gas convenience store, we had a 3,500 square foot restaurant in the middle, then we had the 6,900, um, square foot retail restaurant, two entrances on Innovation Way. So you can see pretty much, uh, impervious on the entire, about 80% of the site, three buildings. Um, the revised plan is here, and basically layout-wise, what we did was just remove the northernmost building, so the building on the right side here, kept the entrances and circulation the same. There is a minor change to this middle building. It stayed the same, but what we did was we removed the drive-through and just flipped it. You remember, it was more on this side, and there was parking on this side, so we just kind of flipped it to put the parking between the gas station and the restaurant. Um, the gas station, circulation, the front of the, the site here, the curb cuts, nothing changed that regard. And then drainage-wise, as Tom stated, um, basically what we did was the drainage system from this northernmost entrance south, so from here on the plan, from the entrance left, all around the gas station that had stayed pretty much exactly the same. And where we had two or three large underground, uh, detention systems under the parking lot for that third building, we now have a detention pond sand filter. Um, so basically, just from the, the collection system stayed the same, it's just that storage, uh, BMP, the storage stormwater basin, uh, went from below ground to above ground. Um, and there was a reduction of about, um, I think a little over half an acre of impervious with this change. Um, we still meet all the water quality, all the stormwater requirements that the peer reviewer, um, required from the original plan and all the state, um, standards. So that's kind of the overview of the changes. I don't know if anybody has any questions, I can, um, answer them or provide more details, but that's, that's the overall changes.
So Brandon, um, the, the reason, you know, in fairness to everybody, uh, Attorney Kloran had reached out to me along with Brandon, uh, and, and asked me this question, and, uh, I didn't think it was one that the chairman should be making, uh, on his own or her own, on their own. So, uh, which is why I asked them to come tonight and, and, uh, let us know what their minor changes were, and let the board decide if in fact this is a minor change. Um, you know, usually it's not a reduction. You know, usually it's afterwards, oh, you know what, we just want to add this on and, um, and then we're forced with that. In this instance, it's a reduction, but because there were changes being made to the, specifically the stormwater, um, and, and I know that there was a lot of back and forth initially with the stormwater management, um, and so a lot of peer review and all, I, I thought it was just fair that the whole board have, uh, at least, uh, an opportunity to, to give their opinion. Now, my opinion is this, um, and thi- this, this may be something that we have to have the applicant agree to, but, um, Brandon, you state that everything meets the stormwater management and the policy and all that other stuff. Uh, but typically, uh, we would have some sort of review process to verify that, right? You guys well aware of that, right? That I'm not, that's not extraordinary. Um, so it, it, there, there may be, if we do determine that this is a minor modification, there may be cause for us to at least verify that the changes, because I'm in agreement with you. If you're reducing the overall traffic, uh, footprint, uh, impervious area, uh, which means subsequently you're reducing, uh, you know, uh, stormwater discharge and flow, um, you know, everything's being reduced, right? Did I hear you correctly say that you're not gonna have the, the drive-through any longer either?
The drive-through on the middle building, the drive-through on the gas station remains, but we had a second.
Will stay the same. Oh, yeah. Okay, all right. Um, will there be, if I'm not mistaken, and you can correct me, um, did we not give a special permit to you to operate, uh, outside of the, uh, by right hours of operation?
I believe so, yeah. We're, um, the, any of the special permits related to hours, we're not looking to change.
All right, so you're not looking to change that. But, but, um, would you be able, if you haven't already, and I apologize, again, it's difficult not doing things in person and not, but, um, is there some sort of narrative, if you haven't already, provided to show what we approved and what you're, you're, um, reducing it to? So vehicular traffic, this is how many vehicle trips a day, or this is what it was designed for, and now this is going to the, so if, uh, we can make head to tails of those, and I, I think I agree with you again, that this is a minor in that it's, it's being reduced. We're not, we're lessening the impact, quite honestly, not increasing it. Um, but there need, I think that there should be some way that we at least get a rudimentary review of, of the stormwater to, again, make sure that it's going to work. Uh, would you agree with that or disagree with that?
Mr. Chairman, I, I can tell you that the applicant doesn't have any issues with the revised stormwater being reviewed by the town's consulting engineer.
Okay, I appreciate that. You know, it's, uh, this is gonna be a good faith deal, right? In that, uh, um, I'm not sure that we have any legal mechanism, because you guys already have the permit, right? So I don't know, and, and we, we talked, uh, briefly about this. Um, we do still retain EPG, and they would probably, would have had to have gone out there at some point in the time to do some sort of peer review when it comes to sign off and things like that. So we still have that relationship with you, and, uh, so, um, we don't have EPG on the line tonight. Is that correct, Chris? We have no reason to have EPG here, right?
Nope.
No, okay. So, um, I would say that if, if you can get us everything submitted, and, and we could try to, um, we could try to ask EPG to, you know, just take a look to make sure that the means and methods that you're, uh, you're providing are, uh, within normal standards, and that, uh, you are in fact, uh, meeting the stormwater management. Um, if, try to get that answer and response back by our next meeting so we can, uh, so we can give you an official vote on this. I think, uh, if you want to just do a consensus, because I know you're really looking for some sort of direction here, um, if there's other planning board members that would like to, to chime in, uh, I will at least give you my opinion. Uh, most often times when we issue a permit and then there's a reduction, we always have in the past looked at that as a minor modification that doesn't rise to the level of requiring new public hearings and, 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 and public notifications, simply because we've already approved a greater amount in all those things. So if we're reducing it, um, so it's my opinion that in fact this can be treated as a minor, uh, and, uh, just subject to peer review solely for the, uh, the stormwater changes, the stormwater management changes. I'd be interested to see what the other, uh, planning board members felt.
Kev, I'm in agreement that, um, I, I would like to see a little peer review on it, uh, stormwater. Uh, it's, it's minor, yes, it's minor, but it, there are changes that I'm not, or a lot of us aren't qualified to, uh, that is getting done correctly with, with the stormwater. So I would like to see a little peer review done on that, just so I feel comfortable that's going in the right direction. I feel comfortable with moving along with the project. It's just, we would like to see just a little bit of peer review done on it, and I'm very comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Kevin, I'm fine with that too.
Thank you, Deb. Chris, do you have anything to say? You don't have to if you don't want to, but I, I just want to give everybody an opportunity.
Yeah, no, just, uh, as long as it's following all the right guidelines. Um,
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with it.
I appreciate that.
It's, it's above, it's better being above ground than underground, because it can overflow.
Well, that's a good point, Chris, you, you know, and, and I even said this to, to the applicant when they called. I said, if this was like a sequential thing, or if this was, let's say they needed the, this underground drainage, um, vault, if you will, because of the extra building, so we're just gonna remove that vault. And that would have made more sense, and, and, well, to me, I'm, I'm a simplistic person. I could have understood that. In this instance, we're taking and we're using a different method. Uh, and again, to your point, Chris, uh, and I've said this a thousand times, I love open detention ponds and I love open swales. They're easy to maintain, you see when there's a problem. Uh, so, uh, this in the long run is better, I think, for maintenance and for, you know, ease of use.
Exactly.
So, so if, if I'm hearing everybody on the board correctly, that we are in consensus that this in fact, proposed change does not rise to the level that it needs to be a, a new, uh, whole new submission and, and public hearing. In fact, because we're reducing the overall impact, so, you know, light, noise, traffic, it's all being reduced. It's just that we have that one item that we'd like to have peer reviewed. So, um, I don't know if we need any kind of official motion at this point in time. I, I think, I think you've got the, the consensus of the board. Or, uh, how about this? Um, I'll entertain a motion that we, that we make the determination that the newly submitted plans, as provided to the planning board, uh, do not rise to the level of a, um, major change and falls in the minor change category and does not require the filing of a new public hearing and, and application, uh, subject to peer review on the, um, the stormwater management changes only. I'll entertain that motion.
Some more, Kevin.
Thank you. Second. Just need a second. Thank you. Motion's remained supported. Uh, if there's no further discussion on the motion, um, from the applicant, nothing either?
Nothing further from us.
Thank you. Uh, that being said, then, uh, I will take a roll call vote. So Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Deb Robbins, aye. Jim Freitz.
Aye.
Jim Freitz, aye. Chris Mello.
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye. Kevin Demaris, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Um, so what we will do is, uh, tomorrow, when, uh, my staff gets into the office, I'll have them reach out to you and reach out to EPG to let them know what we're thinking. Uh, there will probably be, be a requirement, if we don't already have, uh, extra funds in the peer review account, then we will obviously need to have some of those replenished. Um, we'll get that amount from EPG, uh, and see about getting, um, you know, that information back, and hopefully we have it back before our next meeting so we can, you know, verify, uh, and, and fortify our decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we gonna, are we officially, excuse me, I'm sorry, this is Tom Kloran. Are we,
Sure.
are we officially on, um, the next meeting in general? Are we waiting till we get, um, ourselves to EPG? It gets reviewed and we get a letter back?
Well, we'll, we'll put you on the next agenda tentative to receiving that information. If it's two days before or whenever we posted, if we haven't got that back from EPG, and I would imagine that we will. Uh, and if we haven't, then obviously we'll take you off and we will contact you on that. But, uh, uh, you know, as we have done in the past and with, uh, many applicants, when we've had a continued, uh, review process, um, if someone can, you know, pledge that they're gonna get us a check, um, and today's Tuesday, so I would like to see a check in the next couple of days, but definitely by the end of the week. Uh, if we don't get a check, so what I'm, what I'm saying is we'll let EPG know that they can commence work or have a check on the way. If we don't get a check by the end of the week, uh, then, um, we will have them stop work, and then, uh, obviously, uh, we need, we won't be able to move forward.
That's not a problem. Uh, we will get a check certainly over to the planning board office this week. Um, is there an amount that you can let us know now, or will somebody let us know tomorrow?
Chris, Chris, uh, You know, to let you know, uh, after we talk to EPG, I don't, uh, I'm not good at, at that game. Uh, uh,
That's no, no problem. I kind of thought that would be the response. You'd probably need to talk to EPG first, so as soon as we get that information, we'll get a check over there right away.
I appreciate that. All right, is there anything else from the applicant?
All right. That's it on our end.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Sure thing. Have a good evening, Brandon. Good luck with your next meeting, and, uh, we'll talk to you this week. Thank you. Be safe, everyone.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, um, next on our agenda, we have a discussion, uh, for surety for Locust Acres. Um, so that would be the first thing that was on our agenda. Uh, thank you, uh, folks who are here from Locust Acres for your patience. I know you were first, but, uh, sometimes, um, the chairman's gotta do what they have to do to make things work. So, uh, where we're at with this, we received a request for a surety, uh, for, uh, and what was provided to us was a covenant, uh, for the lot that is on actual Sammy's Lane. And the request was to, uh, leave the one that's on Locust Street off of the covenant, or out of covenant, if you will. Uh, to be fair, uh, I think we have, uh, Chris, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think I heard, uh, Mr. Nielsen is here, and I think I heard, uh, the prospective buyer is also here. Excellent, okay. Um, anyone else, uh, from, uh, your team, if you will, Mr. Nielsen? Are there any attorneys here? Do you have any real estate agents here? Is there any engineers here?
We have Cory Magid.
Good evening, Kevin. Cory Madaris from SciTech CDC.
We have.
Hi Cory, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. How about yourself?
And we have Anne Marie Sawyer, who, who's our realtor, and I'm sure, I don't know, Fadi had, do you have someone, uh, from your team here, Fadi? Or is it just you? You're, you're on mute.
Oh, uh, if you're on mute, you could, it, 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 listen, here, here's the crux of it, right? This is a typical administrative thing that we ordinarily would do, uh, but unfortunately, Mr. Nielsen, I think your effort to provide us with the most information you could, you provided us, I think, with a little bit too much information, which then led us to be a little bit confused. And, and so, uh, a couple of the board members had some questions about it, and, and, um, I'm not gonna get into the, the minutia of what wording confused us. The bottom line is this, uh, we wanted to make sure, because in fact, in you, in your letter, you pointed out that you were going to be selling it to prospective buyers. Um, and, um, with that, if they are gonna be responsible for the subdivision, there are certain things that they need to do and what we need to do on our end to ensure that they are fully understand the permit that was given, the conditions and the requirements of the approval, and then after that, any of the covenants and all will have to be placed in that person's name, or the surety would then need to be placed in that person's name. So, which is why, uh, we wanted everybody here to understand that. And so, um, to be clear, I'll ask the question.
You understand our goals.
I'm sorry?
You, we've, you, you understand our goals. We wanna, we wanna accommodate everything for, for the city and what, what the town needs and requires. We wanna appropriately transfer the ownership of the two lots to Fadi, and,
Right.
and Fadi's agreed to take on the burden of the road construction and any of the other stuff that's related to the, to the process of building, uh, you know, beyond that point.
Yeah, the crux, the crux of it was, and I will, if, if need be, I'll get into the specific. Um, you said that the prospective buyers, and it was plural, and, and it was, and, and so there was either, I don't want to say a misunderstanding, but it, it wasn't clear, uh, uh, you know, there's buyers, that's multiple people, is he trying to get rid of both lots? We can't keep one buyer as surety if you're trying to sell. So there were a number of issues, uh, and, and, or, or that was, that was one of the issues, and, and it was brought up. And, and they wanted clar- clarification. So I can appreciate that, and this is not an extraordinary request. Again, it's the applicant's choice on what they want to provide us with for surety. Uh, and, and, and truth be told, we would much prefer cash. Uh, after that, we prefer a construction bond, after that, some sort of surety note, and then finally, it's the covenant. We don't get a choice, it's the applicant's choice. That's the law, right? And so how do we manage it? You've got 50% of your lots you want to put in, in, undercover it. That's, that's fine, and, and, and I don't think anybody has a quarrel with that. And, and yes, we're insistent that.
That isn't necessarily, that isn't necessar- what we, like I said, it's, it's, it's simpler than that. I haven't spoken with, with, with Fadi and his, in his team or via our realtors on what his choice might be for that. If, we want the simplest way to transfer the two lots to him that meets the requirements that you have that are acceptable to the buyer. We want this to be a smooth transition, and, and, and we're trying to do everything we can to accommodate what he needs and wants to do and what you want to do. So if you explain the options, I, I mean, I guess I would, I would leave this back to, to Fadi, to where he's comfortable, you know, how he, which, which process he would prefer. And then second of all, if there is a surety of how much, how much is that? You know, it's kind of tough for anybody from an economic standpoint to, okay, $50,000 to build a road and $50,000 surety, you know, I don't know how he's financed, that, that can be a huge burden. Our, our goal was to sell both lots at the same time, if that was possible, if it has, you know, and I don't know what is, his necess- necessarily what is, his plan or preference is, so you, you got it. Thank you.
But here, but, but you have to, but you have to understand legally right now, this is in your name, it's not in his.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay. And so, but I'm gonna be clear, because I've never spent this much time on, on, on a covenant, on, on, on a covenant for, for a lot. So what, what I'm, what I'm going to say is you are the owner right now. So I can appreciate what your relationship is, perspective or potential relationship is, you know, buyer and seller, I get all that. If you had just sent a letter, Mr. Nielsen, that said, this is what I want to do, and this is what we're gonna do, it would have gotten done. But because we were bringing in third parties that not, that were not a party to the application and are not signatories on the application, and then we were going to be transferring that permit to them, you know, uh, our options include, uh, you know, keeping a covenant on both lots until the construction on the roadway is completed. Now, I will tell you that that would be out of the ordinary for us. It would be, uh, we typically understand in construction that, uh, a certain amount of work needs to get done, then a certain amount of houses or lots need to be developed, and with that money, then you continue on with your project. This is a really simple and small project. It's two lots, right? But you do have roadway improvement. So what we're saying is this, we're in agreement with what your proposal is. If, if your potential buyer has a different, uh, idea and would like to either provide a construction bond or cash, or, or, or a performance bond, whichever the case may be, that's a private agreement that you guys are gonna have to enter into, and then you have to come to us. See, we can't sign off on the plans until, until surety has been provided to us. So what we're trying to do is be expedient about this.
So if we go with the covenant, and, and then this all gets done, and then, then I get together with the buyer and our reali- our team, and depending on how he wants to proceed with the project, then, then we, then we go forward with, with, uh, some type of surety if he wants to do it that way.
Right, he, he, you could always change it afterwards. If and when there comes a time that this is going to be Right. You could always change it afterwards. If and when there comes a time that this is going to be sold, again, keeping in mind that these are very specific, these permits to, you know, this was permit for you. This wasn't for an LLC. This isn't a bit. This is, this is going to you. And so when, when the when the real estate transaction takes place, then if there in fact is a surety in your name or covenants or what have you, that would then need to be changed. You get what I'm saying? If you gave us a performance bond, it's going to be through your bonding company that you, that you entered into a contract with, and it's going to be in your name and it's going to have us on it. Well, i- if you sell it and it's in somebody else's name, we cannot go after that bond, you see. So, so that's why that requirement is there. So I don't have a problem moving forward. Now that we've got clarity on the issue, I don't have a problem moving forward keeping that lot that's on Sammy's Lane, and I believe the address is 39 Sammy's Lane? If I'm not mistaken? Okay, so keeping 39 Sammy's Lane under covenant until the roadway construction is done. And Fadi, this is the important part, right? We're not going to release that lot on Sammy's Lane until that road construction is completed. That is going to stay under covenant until that time. The lot that is based, yeah?
So for example, and, and Fadi, I'm just, I, I don't know how you feel about this. We'll talk about this afterwards. We could sell and close Locust. He could, as an option, he could build on. This was our original plan. Build on Locust, sell Locust, develop the road. We're still under agreement on our, on the second lot. Once the road's done, then we can transfer the sale of the second lot to him through that agreement. And we wouldn't have to come up with an additional surety on that because we're just, he's just building the road based on the agreement that we have with the lot.
Mr. Nielsen, I'm going to stop, I'm going to stop you. However you guys want to do it with your private agreements and all, that, that's, that's fine. But to answer your question, yes. As long as we, as long as you are the owner and we have covenants and documents that, that, that reflect that, yes, you could sell the lot on Locust Street because it's not going to be under covenant. That could be developed and you can move forward that way. That's entirely up to you. It's outside of the purview of the planning board. So, so what I'm hearing is for tonight's purposes.
Before anything happens with the, yeah.
Wow.
Yes.
Um, um.
I apologize.
Mr. Nielsen, I'm going to, okay, thank you. Thank you. We are going to respond to your letter and the letter requested us to keep Lot 30, excuse me, 39 Locust under covenant, release or not place a covenant, excuse me, on the Locust Street lot. Um, and that's, that's where we're at. And we just wanted to make sure everybody was clear because again, there was some wording in, in your letter that, that caused a bit of confusion. Is there anybody from the planning board that has any questions or comments relative to this? Or did we get some sort of clarity from, from this?
Kevin, Lot 39 Sammy's is in fact Lot 2, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, it's the second one, one in the middle. Okay, all right, that's, that's what I wanted to just double check.
Yeah, because the fact of the matter is this, and we talked about it during the Form C subdivision public hearing, that the Locust Street lot actually could have come in as a Form A because it has plenty of frontage and access on the actual Locust Street. And that's a matter of fact, you know, that's, so. I, 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 I think we all felt a level of comfort there, right? That they could have come in with a Form A and that would have been fine. And there would have been no surety and none of this subdivision or anything. So if, as, as long as the rest of the planning board has, has a, has a level of comfort with this, uh, then I, I would entertain a motion that we grant the applicant's request that a covenant be placed on Lot 2, I believe. And that would be the physical address of 39 Sammy's Lane, that we place that under covenant and not place the Locust Street lot under covenant. Can I get that motion, please?
Kevin, not to interrupt, but you may want to exclude, there's Lot 1 as well.
Which one's Lot 1?
Lot 1 is the existing house.
Lot 1 is on Locust Street.
Lot 1 is their house, isn't it?
Lot 1 and Lot 3 is the existing house and the lot on Locust Street. Lot on Sammy's Street is Lot 2.
Okay, so that's the one that we're going to put under covenant?
Yep, Lot 2.
We're not, we're not putting the the house that exists there already has legal frontage on Sammy's and was not part of this subdivision approval. Correct?
Exactly.
Right.
I'm just reading from the, from the original covenant that was issued. Um, that was already recorded that since expired, the, I don't know, when's this, 2013?
Well, the good news is, Corey, we're going to write up a whole new one.
I'm sure you are.
All right, so this has got to be a world record for a covenant discussion. I'm not going to lie to you. This is really, so, so I, did somebody make the motion that we keep under covenant and that we do not require the, the Locust Street lot to be under covenant? Can I get that motion?
I made that motion, Kevin.
Thank you. Did I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you very much. Uh, so most may support it. If there is no further discussion on the motion, I'll do a roll call vote. Deb Robbins?
Aye.
Aye. Jim Prates?
Aye.
Aye. Chris Mello?
Aye.
Aye. Kevin Damaris, aye. Okay, so that passes unanimously. So to, in fairness, so everybody understands, we did exactly what you requested, so you're good to go. Uh, once we get the covenant documentation all put together and it gets signed and then we will sign it and all, then the approval becomes 100% and then we can move forward. If and when you go to sell the new lot or you sell the lot that is the road and the new, however it is, if those, any one of those changes ownership, we need to be made aware of that. So whether it's to Fadi or anybody else, when that happens, if that happens, we need to be made aware so that those changes can be made to files, to and to the actual permit and whatever surety, okay? All right. Well, thank you, folks, again. Fadi, thank you for attending.
Thank you for your time.
You're, you're welcome. I feel privileged to be part of Fadi's first Zoom meeting ever. So, there you go. Thank you. Have a great night, guys. All right. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a discussion of going back to in-person meetings. My understanding is the governor's new order allows municipalities to have indoor meetings, I believe, of up to 100, so long as proper social distancing is, can be attained and that proper COVID protocols are also, meaning we all need to be masked, whether we've been inoculated or not, or vaccinated or not. We all need to be masked. We need to be six feet apart and all. The good news is the police station community room is now open for us to use. So we would have a large space to have some of these meetings in. Uh, it wouldn't be that we'd be stuck at Town Hall trying to do this, is what I'm getting at, because that would plant social distancing Town Hall the whole way. So we cannot do it for the April 20th meeting. And we don't necessarily have to get, because not everybody's here tonight, but we don't necessarily have to get a, a vote tonight or, or, or or even your opinion. Uh, but what we are going to need to do is at our April 20th meeting, we are going to need to continue those public hearings to a date, time and certain, and a place, time and certain. And so when we go to do that in April, on April 20th, we need to know, are we going to be doing it in person or are we going to be doing it via Zoom again? So if anybody has even, even a yes or no, are, are we, are folks on the board comfortable with going back to in-person planning board meetings?
Yes.
Yes, I got one. 100%, okay, I got a second.
Yeah, Kevin, how, how, how do you control the public? How do you control the public? 5,000 people show up, a door, walk in.
The, the pub, and.
Well.
I'm, I'm assuming that was Dave?
Yes, it is, yep.
Yeah, good. Excellent. Thank you. Because I was just about to ask you for what your opinion is too. Uh, because you are a member of this and I wouldn't want to leave somebody out. So the public would be controlled in a way that there is signage up there already. We could certainly hand out, handouts. Uh, I will make it painfully aware to everybody that these are the rules that we must follow. If we do not follow them, then we will then have to, you know, stop the meeting and, and, you know, go back to Zoom. Uh, but I, I will, I can tell you this, I have no desire to be the COVID police. Um, and in our zero salaries that we all receive, we are not paid to be COVID police. So all I can do is politely ask and then I can react. You won't, you, you're not going to see a situation where I'm going to get it or that any of us should be getting into arguments or, or anything of that kind. If it's a, if it's a building or room population issue, meaning if the room can safely accommodate 40 within social distancing, but we have 45 to 50, well, that becomes an on-the-fly management or, you know, decision. And if we get folks that, you know, may not be interested in one public hearing, if they voluntarily or willingly agree to wait out inside in their cars or, or what have you until they can't be milling around and waiting out in the foyer of the, of the new police station. So, um, and again, we don't have to make a decision tonight. And, and if need be, what I will do is I will get whatever the COVID protocol is going to be for that room. I'm pretty familiar with it because we've been kind of dealing with it for a while. But to your point, Dave, maybe we just need to get that, whatever it is, out of the, the police department. Uh, if they have that, that we could then, uh, you know, even put on our meeting a notice or our agenda, our, our, our public hearing announcement that, hey, we're doing it in person, but these, these are the rules to, to, that we need to comply with. Um, but in general.
You always have an option. You always have an option. If you wanted to, you could do a hybrid. We could have our meeting. It could be filmed and on Zoom if anybody wants to review the meeting on Zoom. They can still see it. I know the towns have done something like that.
We, we could.
They've had the board and, and you've had the board and then you've had the client uh, in, in person. And if anybody wanted to, and then the meeting was on Zoom.
Right. No, no, we, we could. And that, and, and quite honestly, I think that.
Seems like, seems like a lot of work, but it's always an option.
No, no, I, it, it's, it, but it, yes, it could be a lot of work, but that the audiovisual stuff that they have up there and the technology, it, it may lend itself to that. So I will certainly ask that question. And, but I will tell you this, and I, I don't, unequivocally, if there's even one board member that says that they are not comfortable with going back to in person, we're not doing it. I'm just, I, it's, it's, I am not going to be put in a situation where I'm going to force somebody.
That's fair.
Yeah, yeah. Excuse me, I'm sorry. So I'll, I'll tell you what. Let me reach out to the police station to see if they have anything already printed up or, or Town Administration to see if they have anything. If not, um, for those of you who don't know, but I'm lucky enough to be married to the public health nurse here in town. So I, if we don't get anything official out of those two, what I will do is I will get whatever protocol that she sees, to think would be appropriate and that would meet the requirements of the state regulations. I'll get that stuff out to you guys and at our, at our next meeting, before we even open the next public hearing, we will have a brief conversation about this. I will tell you, if anybody doesn't feel comfortable talking about this at a meeting and you want to reach out to me privately to say whether you are comfortable or not, feel free to do that. Uh, but I can promise you that I'm not going to exclude any board members because of that, which means I'm not going to go to in-person and make somebody feel uncomfortable. Uh, and I will not ask a question why or what for. You just tell me and it is what it is, okay?
Kevin, what are the rest of the boards in town doing? Shouldn't, shouldn't, wouldn't you think town would have a uniform way of doing this?
Yeah, not to get too far off topic, Dave, but we have been looking for some sort of uniform leadership from day one and it's uh, what little we've gotten has always just been a regurgitation of what the state requirements are. I will give you an example. Very early on, we asked to have in-person, if we could use the building, keeping socially distanced, and this is very early on. And we were told no by the town because at that time, there was a requirement that after each use, the bathrooms need to be disinfected and cleaned. So again, this is going back, you know, over, well, I won't say over a year, but you know, probably a good eight, nine months, you know, very early on. I, that, I, I, I don't know. I mean, Town Hall still has their public restrooms closed to the public. It's only open to staff. So that's a good point. Uh, I will just look in, but, but no, we have not received anything official. The last thing we got from Tim out of Town Administration was again, a regurgitation of an order or something that came out last November. So no, there isn't a consistent across the board. Uh, we've got nothing from the Board of Health Agent either. Uh, so I'm going to rely on my relationship with my, my wife and the nurse. And I'll reach out to the police chief and Town Administration again to see if that is the case, if they have come up with anything new. So that's the best answer I can give you, Dave. I don't know how many other, I, I will tell you this. I know like the water department has had in-person meetings. Uh, you know, the next time the water department, a water commission has, has, has a meeting and we actually have people attend will probably be the first time. It doesn't happen very often is what I'm getting at. So they schedule them for the senior center, they space out themselves, and should one or two or three people, there's plenty of room there. Uh, but to your point, if we're opening up new public hearings and having interested parties, and I'm going to agree with Jim, I think particularly now, just because board members may in fact feel comfortable, doesn't necessarily mean that uh, we may have the general public or, you know, interested parties feeling, feeling comfortable. So, uh, in an effort not to exclude anybody, I will do my best to see if we can't also have them on Zoom uh, while we're having the meetings so that we could get remote participation from those folks who may not necessarily feel comfortable coming. So I'll reach out to the police chief and see what the capabilities are of that room. And we'll go from there and I'll have Chris send out an email with the information that I get. Uh, now that we've beaten that up, if there, if nobody else has anything else to add, then if anybody would like to make a motion on the minutes, Chris had sent them out. If anybody's comfortable making a motion, if you folks had not had an opportunity to read them and would like to that opportunity, we could certainly wait till the April 20th meeting. Uh, I believe it's 90 days we have to do that. So Chris, we're well within the 90-day timeframe, are we not?
Uh, yeah, it's the February 16th.
I was going to say, yeah, it's the February meeting, right? So I think we're fine. All right. If no one wants to do the main minutes, that's fine. We can, um, we'll do that at our next meeting. Lastly.
I have a chance to look at them, so, okay.
That's, that's fine. That's fine. Listen, it's, it's, it's amazing, you know, but we're all getting busier and busier every day. I thought that, you know, I thought as we got older and better at our jobs and more proficient, that it would be easier, but I can tell you, today was a doozy for me, so. All right. Uh, Chris, is there anything else on our agenda that I can see? I don't see it. Where is it here? Agenda, here we go. No, I think all we have is anything else to come properly before the board. And so since we don't have anything else to come before the board, uh, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Deb. And congratulations, Debbie, on your, your, your resounding victory in yesterday's election. That was good.
I was sweating it out, Kevin. I was sweating it out. I didn't know. I thought maybe it'd be a write-in or something.
But you're not going to compare Deb's account to your account like you did mine?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't need to. I don't need to. Not at not at this time. Not not in the middle of a motion to adjourn, so can I get a second?
You got the second.
Second, motion's made and supported. There's no further discussion. Uh roll call vote. Uh Debbie Robbins?
Aye.
Deb Robbins, aye. Jim Frey?
Aye.
Jim Frey, aye. Chris Mello?
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye. Kevin Damaris, Dave, aye. Motion passes unanimous, so the meeting is adjourned. Dave, thanks again. As always, you don't say a lot, but when you do, it's something that's it's important, so I appreciate your input. Thanks for being here. Uh everybody, uh stay safe and uh look look uh for that information coming in in your email in the next few days. Have a great night, everybody.
Great.
Thanks.
You too. Good night.
Yeah, bye-bye now.